You're listening to the Chad Hasty Show on demand. Good for you. Now download the KFYO app and listen live weekday afternoons, five to seven P. M. Central.
Broadcasting from the great state of Texas, this is the Chad Hasty Show. News and views with a Lone Star perspective. You can sound off during the show by sending Chad a text at eight oh six six eight zero two seven ninety. That's eight oh six six eight zero two seven ninety, or call in at one eight hundred six eight seven zero seven ninety. Now here's Chad Hasty.
Good evening Lubbock, Amarillo, Abilene, Wichita Falls, Mid-Ides, Dallas, Fort Worth, down in Houston, over in El Paso, and anywhere else inside or outside the great state of Texas, wherever. You may be listening on this Friday. September sixth, twenty twenty-four, sixty days away from Election Day. We welcome you to the program on this open line Friday, this what did you learn Friday as we get ready for the weekend. I hope you're ready for a wonderful, very nice weekend across the Lone Star State. Lots of different festivals going on, different experiences happening, different things you could get involved with. A lot of good college football as well happening, and oh yeah, NFL football as well. It had kickoff NFL last night. There's a game tonight, and of course, you've got games on Sunday and Monday. It's just, it's for football fans, you gotta be very happy. You gotta be just thrilled with with what's going on this weekend and four weekends in the future. As I'm a big fan, I'm a fan of football. I like to 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 relax a little bit and and watch some great games on TV, and that's what I'll be doing a lot of this weekend. Boy, do we have a lot to get into today on the program. We've got County Commissioner Jordan Rackler, who's going to stop by the studio. Lubbock County Commissioner Jordan Rackler scheduled to stop by at about five thirty-five this evening to discuss some things that are going on over at the Lubbock County Commissioners Court that you need to be aware of before a meeting on Monday. So we'll visit with him coming up at about five thirty-five. Looking forward to that conversation. We've also got some updated news on this Georgia shooter, the father of the shooter being arrested. We'll talk about that, whether you agree with the father being arrested or not. We'll get into that. The Texas Tribune announcing that they're going to spread to local communities and why that's a, well, that's not good for quote unquote journalism and what's going on with the news. Well, we'll talk about that as the program goes on. We'll get into some serious political news of the day. Colin Allred picking up a a huge, just huge, huge endorsement today. In fact, most people probably forgot that Colin Allred was running for the U. S. Senate, but today people were reminded by this endorsement that he got. So we'll get into that. We've also got some presidential election news that we'll be getting into. And then we've got some other, I guess, oddball fun stories that we'll be getting into as well. If you're new to the show, it's like what's what we like to do on Fridays. We like to combine a little politics, a little bit of fun, some running topics, some things to just get you ready for the weekend as we cruise into your Friday evening. We know that sometimes you want to think about other things than just what's going on in the political world. Maybe you want to, you know, I don't know, maybe you do want to talk a little football. Maybe you want to do that. Maybe you're a Cowboys fan and you you want to predict how many wins the Dallas Cowboys are going to get this season. Maybe you want to want to predict if you're a Red Raider fan. Red Raiders taking on Washington State this week. Do you do you do you think the Red Raider defense will, you know, be able to stop Washington State at any time? We can get into that, that that topic. Boy, I'm glad I did not watch the Texas Tech Abilene Christian game from last week. I just would have been upset, throwing things, very upset about what was going on, even though Tech won. It was still a very frustrating game from everyone that I spoke to who actually got to watch it. So we've got all of that to get to. If you're a fan of other college football programs, you can text in your favorite college football programs that you're going to be watching, all that kind of good stuff as well. We've also got some good running topics for you. Of course, today is International Bacon Day, which congratulations to all of those who who, you know, celebrate International Bacon Day. If you are someone who enjoys bacon, then congratulations. Today is one of your days. Now, on Sunday is National Grandparents' Day. National Grandparents' Day is is on is on Sunday. And so the the question that we that we are, I guess, just grandparents' Day, not national, it can be international too, but just grandparents' Day. Today we ask you this. What what lessons did you learn from your grandparents? What what what, you know, key lessons, lessons about life? What what do you remember? What stories do you remember that your grandparents told you? What did you learn from your grandparents? You can text in at eight zero six six eight zero two seven nine zero. That's eight zero six six eight zero two seven nine zero. What did your grandparents pass along to you? You can text in and and let us know your thoughts. When you do text in, as always, leave us a name and where you're listening from. That way we can give you a nice, proper shout out. Doesn't have to be your real name. You can make it up if you want to. We'll never know. You can text in at eight zero six six eight zero two seven nine zero. The first voice you hear from when you dial in today at one eight hundred six eight seven zero seven ninety. He's a guy, he's just a guy ready to get to the weekend and be able to relax and not have anything go wrong. Nick, how are you today?
I'm doing well. You know, you you brought up what what your grandparents, I promise I'm listening, the best advice?
Best advice, what did they pass on to you, you know, just lessons learned from your grandparents?
This this isn't really a lesson. This is just a cool thing that my grandpa told us one time. I remember my sister and I, we were very young. We went over to their house, and my my grandpa, he was digging through the attic or something. He was doing some spring cleaning or something. And all of a sudden, we just were like there with him, you know, we're just hanging out with grandpa on on a weekend.
Yeah.
And he and he unsheathes this very cool sword, a very, it was like wavy, very sharp. It's just incredible. You know, when you're just a little kid, I mean, a sword, that's so, that's like the coolest thing you've ever seen. And especially when your grandfather is like wielding it.
Yeah.
That was pretty cool. So then he proceeded to tell us that he got it, I don't know what, he served, maybe Vietnam, I'm not quite sure. But he he got it during his service, and he he was brandishing it and showing it to us. So that always stands out. It's not really advice. It's not really a lesson or anything.
No, just something, a cool story.
It was a cool story.
Yeah, that that counts. You know, just something you remember, you know, from your grandparents, you know, something that you can just, a nice memory, if you will, you know, from your grandparents. So it could be anything, just, you know, something that reminds you of your grandparents.
A sword.
grandparents' Day is coming. A sword, a sword works, yeah. Because, you know, that's that's, I can picture you as a little kid, and just being like, well, what does grandpa have? Oh, my God, it's a sword. That's awesome. And did he let you mess around with the sword? Did he? Okay. All right.
Yeah, we, he let us have, I mean, we 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 were children. So, you know, he he was there and he let us hold it.
He just didn't throw it over to you.
No, he didn't say catch.
Have fun, kids.
Yeah, and then leave. No, he, you know, he let us, he let us have it. And then we, you know, while he was standing there, we were, you know, slowly waving it around and being kids. And then after a few minutes, he's like, all right, that's that's enough. And then he took it and sheathed it.
Yeah, long story short, Nick only has five fingers.
Exactly, yeah. And now you know.
Now, now you know. Let's see, you can text in eight oh six six eight zero two seven nine zero. Whatever happened to the sword? You don't know. You don't know what happened to the sword. It's like the legend of the sword. Now you have no idea. It's probably somewhere. It's probably, it's probably in an attic somewhere. And one day you'll find it again, and 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 you'll unsheathe it. Eight zero six six eight zero two seven nine zero, you can text in. Ryan in Lubbock says, granddad taught me, always check the inside of your boots before you put them on if you left them on the porch overnight. It's always said, that's a good, it's a good lesson. Good, you never know what will crawl in. You just never know. Let's see, Robert, wait in Texas Tech, where they're like the Cowboys, they choke when it counts. You can text in at eight oh six six eight zero two seven nine zero. Another text says, I agree a hundred percent about the father being charged. All right. So we've got obviously a lot of topics going on, a lot of things that you can comment on on this Friday. When we come back, your phone calls, your texts, and much more on the Chad Hasty Show.
The Chad Hasty Show can be heard all over West Texas, weekdays from five to seven P. M. Tune in on News Talk ninety-five point one and seven ninety KFYO in Lubbock, News Talk nine forty in Amarillo, News Talk ninety-four point seven and fourteen seventy KYYW in Abilene, and in Wichita Falls on News Talk ninety-six point three and twelve ninety. The Chad Hasty Show. Make it a part of your drive home, weekdays from five to seven P. M.
Clay Travis and Buck Sexton.
Monday edition Clay Travis Buck Sexton Show. We will be ready for the eve of the big debate between Trump and Kamala, and officially underway, under sixty days until the big election. All of that and more, we'll be breaking it all down for you. That'll be the Monday edition. Clay and Buck come hang.
Clay Travis and Buck Sexton, Monday morning at eleven.
All right. Back on the Chad Hasty Show. Thank you very much for tuning in today. Things that you, you know, that you learned from your grandparents, stories about your grandparents, just, you know, something that you remember that you want to share. As Sunday is Grandparents' Day, you can text in at eight oh six six eight zero two seven nine zero. You can also give us a call at one eight hundred six eight seven zero seven ninety. That's one eight hundred six eight seven zero seven ninety. That's what Herman has done. Herman, welcome back. How are you today, sir?
Doing fine, Chad. Good to speak to you, sir.
Yeah, great to hear from you. What do you have for us today?
Well, like I was telling Nick, I'm seventy-five years old. My grandmother was a better weather predictor than all the people on TVs and radios and what have you.
Yeah.
And I would love to, bless her heart, I'd give my teeth if she was here today. But this is the first time in, I'm seventy-five years old, and this is the first time in my memory, of course, I'm a hundred and ten miles south of Lubbock, but I'm right on Interstate twenty. There is not a single mesquite being on none of the trees in this area. And I've never seen that before. And I know grandmother's always say when mesquite trees were loaded heavy was indication of a hard winter. And she was always right. When they're loaded light, it's going to be a light winter.
Yeah.
And I'd love to hear what she had to say about not being a single bean on the tree.
There may not be a winter. That's what it, that's what we might see. There may not be a, it'll be a very, very, very mild winter is is what it could mean.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be very interesting.
Yeah, that's, that's true. That's, that's great. Herman, thank you so much. Have a great day.
You too, Chad. Enjoy your program, sir. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Herman. You can send in your thoughts on the text line, eight oh six six eight zero two seven nine zero. Speaking of weather, I've got a couple of stories that we'll get to probably at the the back half of the the last hour. The the meteorologist, they're perplexed. They're they're perplexed because every single person, just like they do every single year, they predict that it's going to be the worst hurricane season we've ever seen. I mean, in every sense, Hurricane Katrina, this is the worst, worst hurricane season we're ever going to see. The predictions always go from a, an above average hurricane year. And now they are perplexed that we haven't seen any type of tropical development in the last two and a half weeks. And that right now we are in the the longest, what did I read? The longest, I guess, period of time in at least the in at least the Atlantic during hurricane season, in this part of hurricane season, with no tropical, like real tropical development at all. And they are stumped. They don't know, they predicted it. All the models, all the models, all the data said we were going to have major hurricanes. Now, we're not out of the woods and we could still see major hurricanes. They will probably have another hurricane that pops up. But I was, I was watching one meteorologist, it was just, hey, we don't understand this, folks. We have all these models and all this data. And it just, it makes me laugh every time I see it because these are the same people who will tell you that we, it's that global warming is absolutely manmade, and that that climate change is absolutely going to melt all the glaciers, and that, you know, if we we have to change our lifestyle, otherwise the the oceans will rise, and all these, all this other kind of bad stuff is going to happen if if we don't change things now. But but they're perplexed by the data, the the data and the models that they all plugged in, that it's not aligning with with what's actually going on. They're just, they're shocked by that. Eight zero six six eight zero two seven nine zero. Let's see, some texts coming in. Chad's Elizabeth in Lubbock learned so many things from my grandparents, possibly the most important one, from my dad's dad, Hubert. You could spend your entire life developing your your good reputation, and one poor decision can destroy it. Boy, don't you know that, especially now with social media and in photos and everything else. The the younger generation, they will absolutely learn that. One, one, two, three bad decisions, one or two really bad tweets. Oh, those will come back to bite you. He was a heavy smoker, also in faculty told me and my brother never start smoking. I took one puff off of a cigar when I was a little kid. That was enough for me. We did however roll cigarettes for grandpa using top papers, mild tobacco out of the Prince Albert can, from Elizabeth. Another texture meteorologist means equals weather guesser. Weather guesser. Well, they got models, they got models and stuff. Let's see, another texture, how to find north by using your watch. Mike in Southern Oregon, Chad, a good grandparent memory of vanilla ice cream topped with black coffee. Yum, yum. All right, very good. You can get yours in at eight zero six six eight zero two seven nine zero. That's eight zero six six eight zero two seven nine zero. So earlier today, at the Texas Tribune Tribfest, you had, you had a couple of big announcements. And I thought this one was, it was pretty funny. You had Liz Cheney, oh, Liz Cheney, because you just know, everyone cares what Liz Cheney thinks. Liz Cheney told the the audience at the Tribfest that she would be supporting Colin Allred. That's right, Colin Allred in his Texas Senate race against Ted Cruz. Now, this is the same woman who is endorsing Kamala Harris. She claims she's a Republican, but she's not doing anything but endorsing Democrats and far leftist these days. So I don't know what type of Republican she is. But now she apparently is endorsing endorsing Colin Allred. And it actually said, let me bring this up here. Here in Texas, you guys have a tremendous, serious candidate running for United States Senate. His name is Colin Allred. I'll be working on his behalf, which must be news to Colin Allred, because no one is working for Colin Allred. Colin Allred's not even working on his behalf to actually be elected to the U. S. Senate. But Liz Cheney will be there for him. And then her father, Dick Cheney, announcing today that he will be supporting Kamala Harris. Shocking. We'll be right back.
Call in to the Chad Hasty Show at one eight hundred six eight seven zero seven ninety. The Chad Hasty Show, broadcasting on the Texas Town Square Media Network.
Listen up. It's the fourth quarter. You're almost there. Parents, teachers, counselors, coaches, your boys just are eighteen, but they need one more push. Don't let them forget to register with the selective service system. It's required by law. And if they don't register, they'll miss out on many important federal benefits. Say it with me, SSS.gov.
SSS.gov.
Let's get them registered today.
Are you prepared for an emergency or disaster? Because it's not a matter of if, but when. Don't find yourself saying.
I'll trust water bottles and a flashlight to save the day, but I'll be proved wrong.
With a tornado approaching, I'll realize that I like a wheelchair accessible shelter.
When the floodwaters rise, I'll be up in the attic with twenty cans of beans. It's a recipe for disaster.
Let's prepare so we all have a better story to tell. Get started at ready.gov/olderadults. Brought to you by FEMA and the Ad Council.
The news and talk of West Texas, News Talk ninety-five point one and seven ninety KFYO. You're listening to the Chad Hasty Show.
All right, welcome back to the Chad Hasty Show. Well, you're in Lubbock, Amarillo, Abilene, Wichita Falls, wherever you're at. We appreciate you tuning in today. We'll get back to your favorite grandparent memories as Sunday is Grandparents' Day. So we're taking your memories, all that kind of good stuff, and having fun during the show. Of course, as we've talked about numerous, we've got the presidential election coming up. You want to be paying attention to that. But this is also tis the season for budget season for your your cities, for your counties. You need to be paying attention to what's going on there. In Lubbock County, they've they've got a pretty interesting meeting coming up on Monday. We've got Lubbock County Commissioner Jordan Rackler in the studio today.
Good afternoon.
Good to have you back, man.
Thank you.
How's it going?
Thanks for allowing me to come.
Yeah.
It's good. It's good. We're we're right in the middle of a heated budget and.
So things are getting a little contentious.
They are. Every day they get a little worse and a little worse.
So tell us what is, okay, before we get into item seventeen.
It's item eighteen now. So it was seventeen on the the draft, and it actually made, it is an item number eighteen on the agenda that is posted for Monday morning.
Okay, so we'll get to that here in a second, what you sent me yesterday. But let's talk about this, this, the, you know, possible tax increase. Because there's a a move that it seems like you and another county commissioner may make on Monday. Tell us about this and and what's going on with this, 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 this whole tax issue with Lubbock County.
The state of Texas has a out where if two commissioners, you have to have a super corm for a tax hike. And three is generally a corm, four is a super corm. So if two people decide not to be present for the vote, you don't have the ability to pass a tax increase. And that's since the consensus of the court on everything now is three to two, then two does have the ability to pass a no new revenue tax rate instead of a voter approved tax rate.
Okay, so if you, if you and another county commissioner do not show up, then a budget is still going to be passed, but it's a.
It's got to go to the no new revenue.
No new revenue rate.
Yes, sir.
What would that mean for Lubbock? Why is that a good thing for Lubbock County taxpayers?
So because of the appraisals and sales tax, we still have seven-ish million dollars more than we had last year.
Mm-hmm.
And so we we made a budget work last year with with a little bit of extra spending on some things that. So the way that the county budget works, and a lot of people don't understand, because we have a judge that's telling everybody, we're going to have to cut, cut, cut and make this work.
Right.
People turn in their budget, and it's their wish list, or their wants, or their needs, or the combination of all three. And so they go in and they turn in what they want, and then we go over it and look at it. And if the money's not there, we make cuts. We ask department heads to come in and make cuts, because as a business owner, I would rather make my own cuts than have someone tell me this is what you're not going to do. And so we have department heads that some of them came in and were like, let's cut this five million. Some of them complied real well, and a couple of them were like, no, that's what I have to have. Well, we ended up cutting millions and millions out of it anyway. So as of Thursday, it had been cut down to the voter approval rate, because that's what the auditor and the judge and the other two commissioners are planning on passing. And so the cuts have been made to the voter approval rate. The voter approval rate for twenty-five is a hundred and sixty-five million, seventy thousand, one hundred dollars. The no new revenue rate is seven million dollars less than that. Last year's income total was a hundred and fifty-three million. So it's still more money than last year because of increased revenues and sales tax and your inflation, and your property taxes went up.
Yeah.
And so it's it's more money on your property taxes. So if we don't show up on Monday, they cannot pass a voter approval rate.
Right.
The last year that I was in, last year, whenever I was involved in the budget, which was the first year, it immediately, we went to voter approval rate. I voted no. Commissioner Corley voted no. Commissioner Corley wanted a higher rate because he wanted to throw more money at the DA's office to try to increase the ability to get the out of housing. We, our jail is storing people out of out of county. And he wanted to try to speed up the pre-felon, the pre-felon trials that are, we've got fourteen hundred and thirty-three people in our jail today. Fifty-one of them are stored out of county, and over half of them are pre-trial felons. So if we could take care of the pre-trial felons, if we could get those court cases done, we could go ahead and and work on the population at the jail. And Commissioner Corley wanted to increase it and go to the voter and let the voters decide if we were going to fund a larger DA's office to try to move these these court cases. I was a, man, I'm a conservative. I'm a business guy. I hate paying any more taxes than I have to. I understand you have to have M. And O., you have to operate, you have to be able to stay up with times.
Yeah.
But I was a no for that reason. Corley was a no. And I had some people that said, well, why didn't you take it to the voter? Well, if you take it to the voter and it fails, it immediately goes to the voter approval rate. And a lot of people didn't understand that because they're like, either go no new revenue or let us decide. Well, if, I pick the lesser of two evils.
Yeah.
Because we could either spend money on an election and still go here, or we can go to the voter and we can, we can have an increased tax rate. And so last year I had voted no. Last year, the the consensus of the court was to go to the voter approval rate. I had told the accountant, or I told the auditor, I believe it was Wednesday, that I would have been willing to negotiate a little bit on the tax rate if the needs could be proven that we had to have them. But the way we've, the way we've operated business the last two weeks now, I told her, I said, I'm stuck, I'm firm, I'm not. But the way we've, the way we've operated business the last two weeks now, I told her, I said, I'm stuck. I'm firm. I'm not, I'm not changing. So.
What are you hearing from your constituents? Do they want you to show up?
I've had eleven people that have asked me to show up, or one of those eleven people had wrote on a KCBD post about this and said, I can't believe he's my commissioner. I hate it. And I did a little research on him. He does live in my precinct. He's a school teacher from the city of Lubbock. So if he's listening, I, I did read your email. I, I saw your post on Facebook and I am your commissioner. And if you don't like it, you're welcome to run against me. So, but I've stopped counting at five hundred. I've had over five hundred people that are like, man, stay strong. We need people like this that'll stand up to, to, to tax increases and stand up to people's wants and.
That, that's weird because I, I remember, uh, there, there was a meeting where the county judge was saying that people want a tax increase.
He did. He, he spud it off.
People are dying.
They, they're asking, they're asking for a tax increase.
If you don't like it.
Move. Move.
Just move.
And so.
I see you're wearing a Rackler Farms hat. It's just move. It's easy for you, right?
I'm.
Just move. Just go.
Generation cotton farmer. I'm, I'm planted mile and a half north of Shallowwater. I'm not moving. So. But when we would did the walkout two weeks ago, we had a guy that offered to bring a U-Haul truck to the courthouse to pick us up. And I was like, man, I've gotta pick up and I've gotta take a diesel. I'll just meet you at Hebrew's Coffee. So. Um, but yes, so that was our last meeting that we actually had as a public, it was a public meeting. Our, our meetings are usually posted to where the public can watch them on live stream. And that was the last meeting that we had as a, as a court together. And now we've been meeting two by two with the auditor because there were some things said that made, made news and, and.
So Monday, if you don't show up, if you and Commissioner Corley don't show up, which is the plan.
Uh, that's my plan.
Is, if y'all don't show up, then it is the, it is, it is the, uh, uh, no new revenue rate.
No, sir. So we still have, we've missed August the twenty-sixth. We have September the ninth, and then they would set the rate on the twenty-third. So we have one more.
So you have one more.
And, uh, the, uh.
So you have to skip two meetings.
Three total.
Three, okay.
And the rumor on the street is, and, and Judge was quoted yesterday, he did an interview and he said, I am truly heartbroken for precinct two and precinct four's constituents because they don't have a say-so in this. We've been meeting with the auditor. We're, we're offering where we can reduce spending, not make cuts, reduce spending.
Yeah.
And the, uh, the consensus is still no because it's three to two.
Can you, can you do one more segment?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do this. And by the way, I'm, I'm one of your constituents. I'm not.
I know. I came to your house three times, remember?
Yeah, you're good. You're fine. Uh, so let's go ahead and take the break. When we come back, there seems to be some retribution.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's getting good now.
At the county commissioner's court, maybe from the judge. We'll see. We'll talk about this when we come back.
The Titan of Texas Talk Radio, Chad Hasty. Talking with newsmakers and about the issues that matter to you. The Chad Hasty Show, weekdays from five to seven P.M. Chad's show is also digital with the Chad Hasty Show Podcast. The Chad Hasty Show Podcast can be downloaded on Apple Podcasts, Amazon Music, Spotify, and the radio on demand page at kfyo.com. The Chad Hasty Show, all across Texas during your drive home, weekdays from five to seven P.M.
This message is from the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs. Lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer-related deaths among veterans. But screening can save lives because lung cancer is most treatable when caught early. For eligible veterans, annual lung cancer screening is free with no copay. Learn more about lung cancer screening at cancer.vaa.gov or talk with your primary care provider.
All right, back on the Chad Hasty Show. We've got, uh, rabble rouser Lubbock County Commissioner, uh, Jordan Rackler in the studio. So, uh, the, the plan is you've got to miss at least two more meetings, uh, in, I guess you could call it a protest. It is a protest, a form.
It's breaking a quorum.
It's breaking a quorum. Uh, this is allowed to happen. This is not you ditching your job. This is not you abandoning your job. Uh, you were very, you, you, you posted on social media, I remember that, uh, you said, hey, what do you think?
I want people's feedback.
Yeah.
I want people to let me know.
And it was overwhelming on social media, people wanting you to skip these meetings to hold the line on their, on their tax rates because people are sick and tired, uh, of their tax rates going up despite what the county, uh, county judge may think. Uh, people are sick and tired of their, their taxes going up and up and up and up. Uh, so you, you've, you've got to miss these two meetings. But now there's something that's been added to the agenda that it seems like, uh, is, is a little bit of retaliation against you and Commissioner Corley. What's going on there?
So I'm gonna read it word for word. On Tuesday's agenda, that is going to be discussed on consent agenda, which means they do not itemize the, the things one at a time. They don't vote on each of these. They go in consent agenda. Item number eighteen, discuss, consider, or take action to suspend until further notice the use of the county purchasing cards by Commissioner Jason Corley and Commissioner Jordan Rackler. So he, Judge did an interview yesterday, and the quote from his interview was, it's conservative budgeting because our parks are out of money. If that's the case, then all four commissioners' purchase cards would be suspended. The purchase cards are for travel, training, emergency needs. So like whenever I went to Matador the night the tornado had hit, I took generators over there for emergency management for Lubbock County. And I was told if you need fuel on the way for generators or something like that, use your P card.
Yeah.
Done. And I've used my purchase card in a year and nine months, three times, two times at the city of Lubbock Print Shop for, uh, some little postcards that I went and picked up for Lubbock County, for the courthouse. And it got used one time at the cleaning house that I wasn't present. I assumed that they had used the credit card number over the phone to pay a invoice to Lubbock Cleaning, or the cleaning house for, uh, it was like toilet paper or supplies, something for the, the clubhouse in precinct four, which the parks in precinct four include a cemetery, a clubhouse, two baseball fields, and two parks, two things of grass. And we are actually putting in a very nice sprinkler system as we speak using ARPA funds that needs to be completed by October first. And I told the guy that's doing the sprinkler system yesterday, I said, you better have this done by October first because we may not have any money to finish it if we, if we come up short on our ARPA, ARPA funds. But, um, the, there's, there's been some little comments like I, it, it came out because I was told if you don't show up, you may be taken away from those guys. And I was wearing a fire department shirt. And I had asked Commissioner Corley, he can't break the contract. We already have contracts with these volunteer fire departments and we can't. We can't take away from these guys, can we? And he's like, no, no, we can't. And so that's where the, there's been some, are you gonna defund the fire department? So no, now we're gonna defund the parks.
Yeah.
But we're, we're not gonna defund the parks. Everybody has a, I'm gonna call it a fund balance, where you have money that you've set, because until now, we've always got a percentage of the tax rate that goes to your parks.
Yeah.
And that percentage of that tax rate is being cut this year. But I have enough money saved up that I can operate for at least a year until we figure out.
But this idea that.
Budget change.
I mean, I, okay, it, it, let's just say in a, in a, in a, in a perfect world, uh, that the judge all of a sudden, you know, was like, hey, we need to save money. We're, we're gonna cut the cards. It seems like if you're going to.
It would be all of them.
It would be everybody, even, does he have a card?
He does. He uses.
Is he gonna get rid of his card?
No, sir, he's not.
Does, does he use his card, you think, more often than, than you do?
Very often.
Really?
Yes.
So.
He travels a lot more than that. I mean, he, he was traveling last weekend.
So is he, is he gonna refuse to travel?
I don't know. But when we went to the auditor's office yesterday and we were turning in our potential cuts, I'd cut seventy-five hundred out of the commissioner's budget for travel, taking another seventy-five hundred out. And I'd left enough that with the new commissioner that's coming in and potentially a second new commissioner coming in in November, they had plenty of money for travel to, because you have to go to beginning commissioners' conferences and, and then, uh, I'd cut judges down like a third.
Mm-hmm.
And there's no reason that he couldn't make that work. But we have commissioners that take their spouse and go and head to Port Aransas and hang out at the South, South Texas. I've never been over there and I guess I should have been using taxpayer money to go to these conferences because it sounds pretty, but.
Yeah, it sounds nice.
It's, let's go on the county, but I've just never done it.
So he, so this is, this is retribution. Uh.
So that's, um, Ken Paxton's office has been contacted apparently. It was not by myself. But there's, they're gonna discuss what kind of, what, what the action for retaliation could be.
Yeah.
And it's not really gonna matter to me if it passes Monday or not because I don't ever use it. I go through the purchasing department for things. If I need tables or something, I go through purchasing.
If they were to say, we're gonna take, take, you know, take this away, would it ultimately impact you or the taxpayers more? Like as far as negative, negatively, if they couldn't do the, you know, finish the type of, uh, projects that are going on right now?
In, in my case, everything I do can go through, can go through purchasing, so it's not really gonna affect me. If we end up having to do some travel for something or we have a natural disaster and things are,
Yeah.
you don't have two weeks for purchasing to figure out something, then, then it's nice to be able to go swipe it and turn in your receipts. But Commissioner Corley uses his quite a bit because he pays individual contractors. I have a county employee that mows my grass. I have a clubhouse manager.
The Chad Hasty Show, a presentation of the Texas Town Square Media Network. The views and opinions expressed during the Chad Hasty Show are not necessarily the views of this station staff, management, advertisers, or Town Square Media. Broadcasting from the great state of Texas, this is the Chad Hasty Show. News and views with a lone star perspective. You can sound off during the show by sending Chad a text at eight oh six six eight zero two seven ninety. That's eight oh six six eight zero two seven ninety. Or call in at one eight hundred six eight seven zero seven ninety. Now, here's Chad Hasty.
All right, back on the Chad Hasty Show. Final hour of the program. We're gonna continue just a little bit more with County Commissioner Jordan Rackler as we got caught up against the, uh, the, the top of the hour there. And, uh, we were continuing just talking about, uh, these, uh, these, uh, cards, these, uh, cards that the, uh, county judge, Curtis Parrish, he wants to, uh, get rid of these purchasing cards only for, uh, Commissioner Rackler and for Commissioner Corley. Those are the two who happen to be the ones.
The two banditos that don't, that don't abide by.
The rabble rousers, uh, who do not want your taxes to go up. Uh, we had a texture who asked, uh, it's a very good question. Why not just show up and vote no, uh, and what happens, happens?
Because the, uh, the will of myself is to try to serve my constituents and my constituents have overwhelmingly supported that I don't show up. And if I show up and vote no, then an automatic tax increase will go because it's three to two.
Right.
So you can call me a sore loser. It's, it's the law. It's, it's legal.
You know how the vote's gonna go if you show.
Yes, we, we, I mean, the consensus of the court is three to two.
Yeah, I mean, y'all gone through, I don't know how many, uh, you know.
We've been doing this for months.
Yeah, exactly. So you know how everyone stands on, on the issue. We know how the county judge stands on it.
That's very evident.
He's, he's been very vocal that everyone in Lubbock County supports a tax increase and that if you don't like it, just move.
We asked for a tax increase.
They asked for it, yes. I don't remember asking for one, but apparently a lot of other people do.
I believe his justification was on bonds and bonds are for specific items.
Yeah.
So you go to the public and you say, do you wanna build this event center? Do you wanna build this road?
Yeah.
And they vote for that. They don't immediately vote for overall the county to just have an extra budget money to use where they desire.
Yeah. Are, are, are there any other places where, that, you know, with, with you two deciding not to show up, uh, is, is there anything else that the county judge has, you know, planned on targeting you two or?
So I was told the projects in precinct two and precinct four's road and bridge have been pulled. Um, that has not been confirmed, but the auditor did say that they were pulled, but I don't know, I don't believe that one and three were pulled.
That would be hurting the constituents.
That is the constituents.
Right?
Yes.
And he's mad at you guys for not going because you would not be listening to your constituents, yet he would be taking away things from the constituents. Do I have that right?
That, that is correct.
Even though you have listened to your constituents.
That's why I'm doing what I'm doing.
We don't want you to show up.
Yes. So if you, if you think I ought to show up, you're welcome to send me an email at jrackler@lubbockcounty.gov and I will add you to the eleven people that think I should show up. But you're gonna need like five hundred plus friends to email me too.
Yeah. Another texture saying that provision is in place to protect the taxpayer. And, and we've seen this not on play, we, we've seen this play out at Lubbock before. We've seen it play out across the state in other counties where county commissioners have stood up and said, you know what? We're not gonna show up. We're not going to allow this to happen. It's, I think it's a great tool to use. You don't see it used all the time. You didn't use it last year.
No.
It just had specific circumstances. You look at the budget and go, you know what? We're gonna be bringing in more money, just like Lubbock County is. We're bringing in more money already. We don't need this.
Chad, if we could go in and start a budget and do a budget where, okay, this is what we need. Now let's look at the tax number, the, the, the tax base number and see where we have to be to fulfill these needs. It would be different than, we're going voter approval rate. Now let's do a budget.
Yeah.
So, and, I mean, you don't have to go to the top every time.
Right.
We could, we could start and see what, what, what our needs are, but now we're, we're gonna go to the bottom. We're going to the bare bones.
And I, I think the big question, and one of the big questions here, if we go to the no new, new revenue rate and we're not spending as much as the county judge wants us to spend, uh, will Lubbock County be slashing anything that is vital to Lubbock County?
No. They will not.
So it's just extra spending that the county judge wants.
It's, it's extra spending. Uh, they have already, he has agreed now to cut the courtroom updates. Instead of doing one or two courtrooms a year, they had to do, they had down to do eight courtroom updates. It's, they've taken some out of maintenance and facilities. Maintenance and facilities, the first time we sit down, she on her own cut five million out.
Yeah.
Um, Commissioner Corley has been wanting to, pardon me, has been wanting to look at the given allowance for vehicles instead of saying, okay, you can have fourteen Tahos, say you can have this much money if you wanna buy a, a different brand or a different, there's, there's cheaper options. I'm not gonna pick on Kelly Rowe. I'm not gonna pick on the sheriff. I'm not gonna pick on public safety.
Yeah.
I, I think that we can make it happen without ever affecting public safety.
Mm-hmm.
They may not get as many employees as they wish, but we will have enough that we can serve our constituents.
All right. Very good. Uh, it, it, again, you're, you're, you're still wanting to hear from people if, if, you know, uh, if, if you wanna hear from, uh, uh, if constituents wanna get ahold of you, what's the best way they could do so?
jrackler@lubbockcounty.gov. Uh, the county judge's email is cparish@lubbockcounty.gov. Let us know what you think.
Yeah. How, how tenuous are things right now?
They're, they're pretty bad. So I gave you the judge's, uh, email address just now. I found out earlier from the Ken Adams radio show at lunch today that, uh, he had looked online because they were trying to get the judge's info. And the judge's, uh, email has now been switched over to his, his, uh, court coordinator's email. So it's just first initial, last name. You can email anybody in Lubbock County.
Yeah.
It's pretty simple.
Which, I mean, you should. You should reach out to your elected officials, let them know your thoughts on, on everything and, uh, you know.
But if you, if you disagree.
That's what they're there for.
Email us. Tell us why. Give us a good reason. If you think we're doing good, let us know. There's tons of Facebook posts out there where people are, I mean, I've, I've made posts. I wanna know what you think.
Sure.
Tell me. Um, but we're so far into it now, you're not gonna catch up because the overwhelming support for do, do what you're doing, keep it up. Thank you. We can't afford this. Our rent's gonna go up. Just.
I mean, look, people are just, they're, they're tired of tax increases overall. And, uh, I, I, I guess, you know, one of the, uh, this question popped up, uh, on the, uh, on the app chat, uh, which was how much money would this save the average taxpayer going from what has been proposed by the county judge to, uh, you know, just going to the no new revenue rate? How much would that save you?
So based on a hundred thousand dollars.
Which is not the average price of a house.
It's not. The average price of a house in Lubbock County, according to some data that I'd got the other day, was two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
But based on a hundred thousand dollar house, if you're talking three percent, it'll save you thirty dollars per hundred thousand dollars. So instead of, we've heard that it's been said, oh, it's only gonna cost you twenty-eight dollars a year. It's, it's not. It's gonna. It's, it's not. It's going to cost you $35 per hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Of your home. And there's, there's people that I know that are telling me to keep going that live in five million dollar houses. And there's people that I know that are thankful that we're standing up that live in hundred thousand dollars.
Exactly. Every little bit helps and, and that's what people are looking for. Right now they're looking for every little bit of savings they can find when, especially if they're within also city limits and you have the city council looking at increasing their tax rate and having a bond election on top of that. Uh, all these numbers, you know, when I love when elected officials say, oh, it's only $28. It's only $30. Well, all that starts to add up, uh, eventually.
You're being taxed on your income. You're paying income tax.
Yeah.
You're paying property tax on things you've already bought. You're paying sales tax and we're using the sales tax. That's part of our numbers on this.
Yeah. Very good. County Commissioner Jordan Rackler, hey, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for stopping by today and, uh, good luck with everything.
Thank you.
So far the listeners are with you. I can tell you that.
I'm, I'm glad. We need to hear it.
When we come back, your phone calls, your texts and more.
The Chad Hasty Show can be heard all over West Texas, weekdays from 5 to 7 p.m. Tune in on News Talk 95.1 and 790 KFYO in Lubbock, News Talk 940 in Amarillo, News Talk 94.7 and 1470 KYYW in Abilene, and in Wichita Falls on News Talk 96.3 and 1290. The Chad Hasty Show. Make it a part of your drive home, weekdays from 5 to 7 p.m.
Clay Travis and Buck Sexton.
Monday edition, Clay Travis, Buck Sexton Show. We will be ready for the eve of the big debate between Trump and Kamala. And officially underway, under 60 days until the big election. All of that and more, we'll be breaking it all down for you. That'll be the Monday edition. Clay and Buck, come hang.
Clay Travis and Buck Sexton, Monday morning at 11.
All right, back on the Chad Hasty Show. Thank you very much for tuning in. Thanks to Commissioner Jordan Rackler for showing up. Some, uh, interesting times over at Lubbock County Commissioners Court, that's for sure. You can text then at 806-680-2790. That's 806-680-2790. Uh, some folks texting in, uh, saying, he sounds like a great commissioner. We, uh, wish we had a few like him or I lived. That from Mark in California. Uh, another texture saying they wish George Rackler was my commissioner. Uh, let's see, another texture. Uh, weighed in, the provisions in place to protect the taxpayer. Uh, this is, uh, uh, this is exactly, uh, exactly what, uh, we need. We need politicians who will stand up. And from another texture. Another text says, I stand with Rackler and Corley. It appears the judge, uh, appears to me the judge is wrong. Definitely needs to step down or, or resign or be called out and, uh, be made to step down. This is something that will obviously, I think, come up, uh, for the county judge when he's up for reelection. Uh, I think people will remember the, uh, comments that have been made on, uh, if you don't, if you don't, uh, if you don't want your taxes to go up, then move. Uh, I think people will remember that. I think people will, uh, remember this, this, uh, uh, issue of, uh, you know, cutting projects in, uh, in these two, uh, the, in Commissioner Rackler and, uh, Corley's districts, uh, because they are standing on principle. And just because the judge is upset. I mean, that, that's what it comes down to. The judge is upset. And the county judge is, is throwing a fit about this and wanting to cancel, uh, the, the two purchasing cards, which, uh, you know, you hear Rackler, that's not going to impact him. Not going to impact him, but i- if you're going to cancel purchasing cards, and by the way, uh, it's, it's not forever. It's, well, we can, we, we can, uh, you know, it's just for a, a certain amount of time. At some point we may bring this back. But the, uh, idea that we're going to get rid of purchasing cards, uh, to, to have a more conservative budget is laughable. When you're not actually standing for a conservative budget. And when you're not going to get rid of purchasing cards for everybody. So, uh, I, I say, uh, good job to Commissioner Rackler, Commissioner Corley. They should, uh, they, they should do what they plan on doing. And, uh, I don't think that Lubbock County is going to be hurt, uh, by sticking to the no new revenue rate. They're still going to be bringing in more money than they did last year. Another texture, I don't think our county judge ever saw a tax increase he didn't like. Another texture, I quit paying taxes a long time ago. Let's see, it's amazing thing to have an effective and fantastic commissioner, uh, Mike Finney Cannon is my county commissioner. Could be happier about that. Mud from Burke Burnett weighing in on the text line. 806-680-2790. We've also been asking you today, your, uh, your favorite memories, your, uh, your, your favorite lessons learned from your grandparents as, uh, grandparents day will be coming up on Sunday. North Carolina Bill weighing in, uh, my favorite or not so favorite memory, my grandpa was when, uh, you did something bad. He'd get the Board of Education and taught you, uh, not do it again. Uh, so it was, uh, for quote, "On, uh, my own good" and served me well. You can send in your thoughts on the text line, 806-680-2790. Another texture. This is before television. I remember sitting with my brother at the foot of my grandmother's rocking chair, eating popcorn balls while she knitted and listened to the radio. Robert weighed in, my grandfather told me, uh, you have to grow old, but you don't have to grow up. Lawrence weighed in, Chad, first of all, it's great that you're back. Second, uh, and a, uh, did you say it's National Bacon Day? If so, I'm all in. It's, I, I think it's International Bacon Day, not just national, but international. Uh, my grandmother once told me to read proverbs. It would explain most people's actions. My great grandmother told me, uh, told, uh, told me when I was three years old, take care of your feet and they'll take care of you. 806-680-2790. Another texture, uh, from an earlier conversation about Liz Cheney. Liz is a vindictive woman. Yep, yep, yep. I would agree with that. Another texture, farmers make the best commissioners. Send in your thoughts on the text line, 806-680-2790. Nick, uh, are you ready for your final question of the week? I, I know this is something that you've been, uh, thinking of. Oh yeah, yeah, we, we still have time.
Yeah, no, no, no. I was, my, 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 uh, actions were because, uh, I most certainly, definitely, positively have a question ready to go.
Good. Excellent.
Locked and loaded, as I do every, every week. Uh, so I think, we were looking at this earlier. What is Sunday? Uh, National Pet, Pet Day?
National Pet Memorial Day? Are you really going to make people sad?
I have to do it. Hey, i- i- it's either this or, uh, uh, something about bacon, but you, uh, you already did that one. Uh, so here we go. We're, we're not going to make it sad. We're going to make this a happy, a positive, anecdotal, uh, uh, share best qualities about your pets. Which brings me to my question. Um, I got to phrase this correctly.
Oh no.
What, throughout your life, what pet do you have the most, the fondest memories, um, uh, uh, towards, towards which you have the fondest memories?
Uh-huh. You're so, basically your favorite pet that you've ever owned.
That is no longer alive. Yes, yes, yes. That's the one. That's it.
So remember your dead pets.
It's Memorial Day. It's Pet Memorial Day. So this is a, it, this is a remembrance day. You are remembering.
Yeah.
The, those pets that have fallen, that are, that are, that are at rest.
Are you going to play some Sarah McLachlan music?
I may do that, you know? I wasn't thinking about it, but you put that in my head.
Oh my goodness.
I think I might do that, so.
It's also, uh, Star Trek Day. I figured you would go with some of the Star Trek.
No, but we did, we talked about, we, we did this already. We did a Star Trek, because I, I'm like, what, what can we do with Star Trek?
I don't remember anything about Star Trek.
It was before your vacation. You probably, you blocked it out.
I probably did.
It's left in the Bahamas, your, your memories there. Cause we did a Star Wars versus Star Trek, but that's overdone. We've done that a few times. I'm like, I want to do, I want to do something fun.
Let's talk about your dead pets.
Pet memorial day.
That's right.
Exactly. So there you go. So what's your, uh, uh, a, a, a pet you used to have who's no longer here?
This is really a sad show today because we're talking about grandparents.
Yeah.
What do you remember about your grandparents? A lot of grandparents, probably not with us right now.
Some maybe.
Some maybe, some maybe. No, I don't know. But there's probably, a lot of people might be thinking of their grandparents who have passed.
Yeah.
And there may be some good fond memories, uh, but also now remember your dead dogs. And you the favorite, your favorite dead dog, uh, or pet, uh, as Nick, you know, says, your, your favorite, uh, dead pet.
It could be a lizard, a snake, a rat.
No one's going to text in about a rat.
If that was the best pet that you had.
No.
Uh, maybe.
Uh, texture, my granddad, uh, took us fishing until he died, that from Ronald in Lubbock. You can text in, and yes, you can text in about, uh, Nick's, Nick's final question of the week, your favorite dead pet. Uh, you can, uh, you can text in, what do you, what do you, what do you miss most about your favorite dead pet? Uh, according to Nick, who has basically just given up on the week at this point. 806-680-2790. There's someone listening right now whose dog died on Wednesday and they're like, "I, I remember Fluffy. I don't know why. I don't know why. I hate you, Nick. Fluffy." We'll be right back.
The Chad Hasty Show, weekdays 5 to 7 p.m. Sound off during the show by sending Chad a text at 806-680-2790. Today's markets from the Texas Department of Agriculture.
Howdy neighbors, Texas feeder catalog reporting prices steady to 10 bucks lower. Texas weekly direct reported prices uneven to steady and cattle futures were down. October live cattle futures down $2.08, close at 175.17. September feeder cattle futures down $2.82, close at 234.30. October cotton futures were down a couple of points, closing at 67.12. September wheat futures down 11 cents, close at 5.70 a bushel. September corn down 6 pennies to close at 3.84. And September sorbet bean futures down 19 cents, close at $9.89 a bushel. September sorbet bean meal futures down $2.30, closing at $318.40 per ton. September class three meal futures up 16 cents, close at 22.7700. October crude oil futures down a dollar four, trading at 68.11 a barrel, and the Dow Jones is down 410 points, close at 40,345. And that's a market roundup from the Texas Department of Agriculture. I'm your commissioner, Sid Miller. And remember friends, Texas agriculture matters. Sold.
The news and talk of West Texas, News Talk 95.1 and 790 KFYO. Chad Hasty, talking the news at the start, middle, and end of your drive home and when news breaks. This is the Chad Hasty Show.
All right, back on the Chad Hasty Show. You can send in your thoughts on the text line, 806-680-2790. Uh, just a reminder for those of you in Lubbock, we'll have a KFYO Debate Watch Party on Tuesday, September 10th. That's, that's next week. That's when the Presidential Debate Watch Party is happening. That's when the debate is happening. Tuesday, September 10th over at Premier Cinemas at the South Plains Mall. It's absolutely free to attend. They, they may ask you to get a ticket just to get in so that you can have a, a count of how many people, but you don't have to pay anything, uh, to get in. There's no saved seats or no reserved seats. First come, first served. And let me tell you something, you're going to want to get there early to get a seat. Trust me, you're going to want to get there early. Doors open at seven. The debate starts at eight o'clock. Uh, now this is, uh, it's, it's going to be a free event because we've got some great sponsors, including, uh, West Texas Fireplaces, Williams Brake, Tune and Tire, and also the Knife Guys in Lubbock, uh, all of those, uh, all those, uh, great sponsors, uh, allowing us to, uh, put this event on, uh, for free of charge, uh, for you. Now you've got to pay for your drinks and, uh, popcorn, if you want any popcorn or, you know, whatever else, uh, you may want to, uh, pick up there at the theater. Uh, you can do that, uh, but come out and join us. We'll have some giveaways. Uh, we'll, we'll do all that kind of good stuff. And, uh, that's all going to be, uh, happening on Tuesday, 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 September 10th is when that'll happen. And, uh, we've got more information for you over at kfyo.com if you need it. Okay, uh, let's see, story, and I've had a few people ask me about this, uh, story of the Hill today. Florida and Texas are within the margin of error in the presidential race between Trump and Harris, according to a new poll released today. Yeah, don't buy into it, folks. The survey from Emerson College Polling, the Hill, showed, uh, Trump leading Harris by, uh, five points in Florida, in Texas by four points, 50 to 46. The results a bit closer than what some other polling has found on the races, but not completely out of sync with recent polls that have shown a tighter race in the states. Uh, not much, uh, let's see, not much independent polling from major institutions have been done in Texas or Florida since Harris became the Democrat nominee, winning either Florida, which Democrats carried in 2008 and 2012, uh, before the state voted for Trump twice in a row, or Texas, which Democrats, uh, have held increasing hopes about flipping blue in recent years, would be an uphill battle for Harris. The forecast model from the Hill and Decision Desk HQ gives Trump an 83% chance of winning Texas and a 75% chance of winning Florida. But Florida is only rated as a lean Republican and some polls from most states have had Trump leading by just single digits. A Florida Atlantic poll from last month had Trump's lead in the Sunshine State at just three points. A poll from, uh, two Texas universities had Trump leading in Texas by five points. Poll also found significant gender gaps, with Trump leading among men in, uh, Texas by 18 points, up from 17 points in 2020. Among Florida men, up by 12 points, up from nine points. Harris leads among Texas women by eight percentage points. That's up from, uh, three points. And among Florida women by two points. Flipping either Texas or Florida may be a stretch, but would make the Democrats' path 270 electoral votes much easier and make the Republicans' path very, very hard. Well, it would be almost impossible, uh, if, uh, Texas were to flip blue and the, uh, for the Republicans, it would basically, it would make it very, uh, not impossible completely, but it would, it would be very close. Uh, Emerson has been a left wing, uh, polling outfit, uh, so I'm not putting much stock into that. But it would not surprise me if the, the races in single digits in either state, uh, particularly in Texas, where, uh, you've had people like, uh, like Abbott who have outperformed Trump before in Texas and, uh, other elected Republicans in Texas who outperformed Trump. Uh, we've seen this before when it comes down to suburban women who just are not big fans of Donald Trump. They may be Republicans. Uh, they, they, they may go and vote for Ted Cruz. They may go and vote, uh, for other Republicans up and down the ballot, but they don't want to vote for Donald Trump. Uh, I, I still think Trump is going to easily win Texas. I think he's going to easily win Florida. Uh, I, I still think Trump is going to easily win Texas. I think he's going to easily win Florida. Uh, but, uh, this should, uh, this is just a, another wake-up sign to people. You've got to get out and vote. Take nothing for granted. You've got to get out and vote in this election. Uh, some texts coming in on, uh, the, the people's, uh, favorite pets that have passed away, thanks to, uh, uh, Nick bringing it up. People like it. Uh, "My horse Brownie, most loyal animal I ever had." Uh, another texture, uh, says, "Great question. I had a dog named Quinn, uh, best, uh, used dog ever, half Mastiff, half Australian Shepherd. He was great. Lived 16 years, uh, died 16, uh, lived 16 years, died 16 years ago. Can't bring myself to ever get a new dog because he, uh, won't measure up. His collar hangs over my bar," that from Mark in California. 806-680-2790. You could text in a, another, uh, texture on the app chat. Uh, "There's no way, uh, Trump loses Texas." Uh, that would be absolutely insane. Uh, I would agree with you. Again, Republicans have to do their job. They've got, they've got to get out and vote. Uh, but yeah, one poll showing that it's within the margin of error in a, uh, one poll from a, uh, kind of a, more of a left-leaning polling outfit. Uh, that, that doesn't really, that, that should not really worry, uh, anyone out there. 806-680-2790. That's 806-680-2790. Story that I, uh, sort of brought up, uh, earlier today at the very beginning of the show, and I, I think it's just, it's kind of, it's kind of funny. Uh, meteorologists who are just shocked that, uh, the hurricane season is, uh, is not working out the way it's supposed to. Uh, headline from CNN, "This hurricane season is confounding experts in defying forecasts." What the heck is going on? It's early September, which should be the busiest stretch of the hurricane season. Forecasters predicted this one was going to be bad. Storm after storm, the most bullish forecast on record. Instead, the Atlantic is enveloped with a rare and strange calm that has flummoxed forecasters and reset their expectations, and the whole thing could be a glimpse of what's to come as the planet gets hotter. Oh, so now climate change is good, I guess. Uh, despite ideal conditions that have fueled preseason predictions of upwards of 20 named storms, the immediate prospects for one are low. None informed in the Atlantic since Ernesto, uh, since Ernesto in mid-August, a streak unmatched in 56 years. Quote, "If you had told me a month ago that nothing would develop after Ernesto, I wouldn't have believed you," said a hurricane expert, research scientist at Colorado State University. Quote, "It's really surprising. It's, uh, the strange season with influence by extreme atmospheric conditions that are a byproduct of climate change." Of course, it's all climate change. Uh, good hurricane season, climate change. Really bad, uh, hurricane season, climate change. Could also be a lens into the more volatile storm behavior of the future, uh, said one leading hurricane, uh, season forecaster. Uh, scientists have long said, uh, a warming world would ultimately result in fewer but stronger storms, something this season has borne the fruit of. They've, no, they have not long said that. Every single year we hear, "Due to climate change, it's going to be the worst year ever. We're going to have hurricane after hurricane after hurricane." They're just, as they always do, we're just making stuff up now. We're just making stuff up to get to cover, uh, and show that we really don't know everything, uh, there is to know when it comes to climate, when it comes to weather, and we're really not as in charge, uh, as we, as we, we want to think we are. That sometimes, uh, you can, you can, you know, have all the data you want, uh, you can have all the history you want, and sometimes the planet just goes, "No. No, we're going to do something a little bit different. We're going to do something a little bit different this go around." 806-680-2790. When we come back, we'll begin to wrap things up. Take your phone calls, your texts, getting you ready for the weekend.
The Titan of Texas Talk Radio, Chad Hasty.
Talking with newsmakers and about the issues that matter to you. The Chad Hasty Show, weekdays from five to seven PM. Chad's show is also digital with the Chad Hasty Show Podcast. The Chad Hasty Show Podcast can be downloaded on Apple Podcasts, Amazon Music, Spotify, and the Radio On Demand page at kfyo.com. The Chad Hasty Show, all across Texas during your drive home, weekdays from five to seven PM.
Clay Travis and Buck Sexton.
Monday edition, Clay Travis, Buck Sexton Show. We will be ready for the eve of the big debate between Trump and Kamala. And officially underway, under 60 days until the big election. All of that and more, we'll be breaking it all down for you. That'll be the Monday edition. Clay and Buck come hang.
Clay Travis and Buck Sexton, Monday morning at 11:00.
You, you want to pay less taxes? Move, I guess. I don't know. You, you want to pay less taxes? Move, I guess. I don't know.
Back on the Chad Hasty Show as we begin to, uh, wrap things up. Uh, by the way, I, I've, I've been sent this, uh, article, uh, to, uh, by a few folks. Uh, over at Lubbock Lights, uh, James Clark, uh, writing, I think it was James Clark, yeah, who, uh, who wrote this. The, uh, headline here is, "County Judge Retaliating Against Rebellious Commissioners Are Giving People What They Want." And, uh, it goes through, I, I really, I, I, I want to point out two different lines here. County Judge Curtis Pears said the commissioners are avoiding doing their job. Quote, "I've got two commissioners, uh, that have decided not to come to work and break quorum to do what the Democrats did last summer." Oh, I think he's done about a couple sessions ago, "In running and hiding in Washington DC to try and affect legislation." Pears said, "You, you're the one raising taxes. In, in this scenario, you're the one raising taxes, sir." I mean, you can't just call them Democrats because they're, they're, they're using a provision that is allowed by the state of Texas. It's there. It's a, it's, it is, it is a tool that can be used. The state of Texas allows this to be used. The Democrats, they skipped town because they, uh, they, uh, wanted to, uh, prevent good legislation from getting passed. Rattler and Corley, they want to hold to the no new revenue rate. Uh, it still means there's going to be more money coming into Lubbock County. You can't just call them Democrats and, and say, "Well, they're Democrats. They're, they're, they're acting like Democrats." And think that everyone's just going to go along with that. No, that's not how it works. And then I love this part, okay? This is great. Uh, Pears said this forces the budget cuts that he hoped to avoid. Quote, "When I say it grieves me, I'm telling you, it really does. I'm grieved to my bones." Uh, really? Are you? You're grieved to your bones? The, uh, the county judge, he's grieved. He's grieved, grieved down to his bones. He's so, so grieved by this. Now, of course, the county judge has not reached out to us to come on the program. Uh, if, if, you know, I, he could next week if he wants to. He's, he's got, he knows how to get in touch with me. There's plenty of time to get in touch with me. He can come on the show, but, uh, even when we were playing the clip, do we have that clip, by the way? Uh, let's go ahead and play that. This is the clip I'm referring to.
You, you want to pay less taxes? Move, I guess. I don't know.
Yeah, that's the county judge. Uh, and, and so the, the, when we started playing that, uh, he, he, he did, uh, he, he hasn't reached out to us to come on the show and explain, uh, why he wants a tax increase for the citizens of Lubbock and, uh, why he believes citizens of Lubbock are just dying, uh, for a tax increase. Uh, we have, uh, asked the people who listen to this program, and we have a ton of listeners in Lubbock County. I mean, it's huge. Uh, an embarrassing large amount of, uh, listeners in Lubbock County. And, uh, so far, not, I don't know of any of them who have just said, "Chad, I'm ready for a tax increase." Uh, in fact, they may be grieved to their, their bones, uh, when it comes to, uh, when it comes to, uh, a tax increase. But yes, uh, Curtis Pears says he's, he's grieved. He's grieved. Uh, "When I say it grieves me, I'm telling you, it really does. I'm grieved to my bones." So, uh, it, but, uh, yeah, he's, he's grieved to his bones. Maybe the county, county judge will reach out and, uh, want to appear on the show at some point next week. We'd love to have him. We'd love to have him. Enjoy your weekend. Take some time to enjoy the, uh, the outdoors. Maybe grill a little bit. Enjoy time with family and friends, with loved ones. A little refreshed over the weekend. Have a frosty cold one. I don't know. Just have a great weekend. Stay safe, stay healthy. God bless you all. We'll see you back here Monday at 5:00 PM.
The Chad Hasty Show, a presentation of the Texas Town Square Media Network. The views and opinions expressed during the Chad Hasty Show are not necessarily the views of this station staff, management, advertisers, or Town Square Media.